Barbara Barrosa.
Aziz Essam.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
All right, can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we are expecting both our fifth member and our alternate to join us this evening, so, but we have a quorum, so we can continue with business. Let me start by wishing everybody happy holidays. Next time we see everybody, it will be January, so to all of our members and our, you know, all the support staff for this board, thank you for 2014. It was a very good, productive year, and best wishes to everyone for 2015. So, in the event of snow, for anybody who is scheduled to come back in January, the policy for this board for, for snow is that if town hall is closed for the day, the meeting is canceled. There is no rescheduled meeting. You just would change the date on your sign if you're scheduled for a public hearing for the following month, and we'll see you back in, hopefully, February. We haven't had an occasion where we've had to cancel two in a row yet, so we've been lucky about that. But with that being said, our upcoming meetings are Tuesday, January 13th, and Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. We do have one set of minutes to approve from November 12th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't there.
And Barbara's abstaining. Okay. All right, we do have two decisions on. These are appeals where the board has already reviewed them. We've already conducted public hearings. We've closed the public hearings, and then we needed an opportunity to think through writing those decisions. So we have two decisions that we'll go through first. Then we have a couple of public hearings on. We have three public hearings. These are applications where this board has already reviewed them, so these will be the opportunity for neighbors to comment on them. And then lastly, we have a couple reviews, which actually are all new items. These are ones that we haven't seen before. So this will be the first time where we'll work through any of the issues the board might have on these applications before we set them up for a public hearing. Just one reminder, in this, again, this time of year with snow, with, you know, a lot of moisture out there, if you are scheduled for a public hearing, your sign, please make sure your sign is legible. We suggest you use a Sharpie to keep the, or some permanent marker to keep those date on the sign. If it washes off, please replace it, and please make sure the sign is visible. Just be sensitive to snow. All right, so item number one is a decision, Appeal 3695, Mid Hudson Development Corp. Mid Hudson Development Corp. is requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, .93 acre in an R1 zone located at 6 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction pursuant to Section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. To, I have somebody who would like to offer the resolution, the, yeah, our resolution. There's not going to be any comment tonight. Brian and Ken? Okay?
All right. This is--
Have a seat.
Appeal number 3695, applicant is the Mid Hudson Development Corporation. Resolution offered by zoning board member Barbara Barrosa. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on October 1st, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held public hearings on October 14th, 2014, and this is an application by Mid Hudson Development Corporation, which is requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, .93 acres in an R1 zoning district located at 6 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction pursuant to Section 194-130 of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance. This application seeks an area variance to permit the construction of a single-family home on a parcel of land that is .07 acre too small, i.e. .93 of an acre where one acre is required. See Section 194-130, undersized lots. At the outset, this board notes that the applicant's parcel of land was the subject of two adverse zoning CBA decisions, one in 1986 and one in 1998. It is further noted that one of these two adverse zoning board of appeal applications in 1986 was before the law of New York State, before the law in New York State changed in the mid 1990s with the chaining of the, changing of the New York State enabling statutes, Town Law Section 267-B3. Town Law 267-B3 changed the law of area variances to a balancing test where an applicant must make a favorable showing on balancing the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment caused to the neighborhood or community, and to do so by reviewing the five factors recited in the statute. Therefore, the law in New York State for granting area variances has changed, and a variance application made in 2014 is subject to being evaluated by the balancing test. And the attendant five factors recited in Town Law Section 267-B3. This application is history-based and fact-oriented, and much information was addressed by the board at the two reviews on August 12th, 2014, and September 10th, 2014, and the public hearing conducted on October 14th, 2014. The following brief history and facts and testimony, especially by the applicant's attorney and engineer, were presented to the board. A, review on September 10th, 2014. Thank you. One, the parcel of land in question was created in 1963 when I-84 was being built. The East Hook Sportsman Association Incorporated, the predecessor entitled at the time, owned approximately 266 acres, which were the subject of a taking to build I-84, and the association was paid for the taking. Two, Fishkill Hook Road was relocated and the subject remainder lot, .07 acres shy of one acre, was created. Three, the zoning board of appeals began to employ the so-called compensation policy in the 1960s through the 1980s, i.e. if a property owner was paid for the taking plus received an area variance, they were deemed to be paid twice. This was the reasoning behind the 1986 and 1998 adverse CBA decisions for this property. Four, the advent of New York State Town Law Section 267-B3 does not provide for a compensation policy, so the policy is no longer relevant. Five, in 1998, this parcel of land was owned by the late Richard Barger. The ZBA once again denied the ZBA application based upon the informal policy, the compensation policy. Six, the applicant responded to the board's questions as to there being a buildable lot. Brian Stokosa said there were four front yards, 50 feet front, 50 feet rear, and on the I-84 side, the lot is 100 feet. With the proposed house to be facing Old Fishkill Hook Road and to be approximately 2,300 square feet, there are approvals for well and septic from the Duchess County Board of Health for a four-bedroom house. Seven, the board raised the potential future problem of a road salt issue with the groundwater as the parcel is surrounded on four sides by three roads. Eight, across the street towards the rear of that parcel, there is a large New York State DEC wetlands. Nine, the applicant had made a request to the town to acquire the .07 acre from the town, but found that this was not possible because of dedicated right-of-way of the town. B, public hearing on October 14th, 2014. One, the five factors under New York State Town Law Section 267-B3 were reviewed, see below. Two, the vegetation on Old Fishkill Road will remain according to the applicant. Three, the zoning board of appeals raised concerns about noise from I-84 for a potential purchaser, as well as restrictions on a future owner being able to place a pool, garage, shed, gazebo, or any other structure that are not allowed by town code in the front yard of a property on the property. The board felt the need to disclose same to a potential purchaser. Four, Mr. Stokosa confirmed that there were no wetlands or wetland buffers on the applicant's parcel. As far as evaluating the five factors under New York State Town Law Section 267-B3, this board hereby finds as follows. One, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties as the applicant is going to build a single-family residence in a residential zone. Two, the desired result cannot be achieved other than by granting the requested variance, .07 acre, and no additional property is available to acquire. Three, the variance is not substantial, .07 acre. Four, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or zoning district. See one above. Five, there are no self-created hardship here. There was no self-created hardship here. The parcel in question was created by taking in 1963 and not by the applicant. In the end, there is one precedent characteristic of this parcel. It is four front yards, as it is surrounded by three roads, Fishkill Hook Road, Old Fishkill Hook Road, and I-84. As a result of all the foregoing, this board hereby grants the applicant a variance to build on an undersized lot, .93 acre, in an R1 zoning district located at 6 Old Fishkill Hook Road, Hopewell Junction pursuant to Section 194-130 of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall execute and record in the Duchess County Clerk's office a declaration of covenants which shall contain the following provisions, among others, all to the satisfaction of the attorney for the ZBA. Two, any building permits for the construction of a house shall be subject to a plot plan review by the Building Department, and the plot plan review shall contain the declaration with the following statements to the applicant for the building permit. A, this parcel received an area variance for an undersized lot by decision and order dated December 9th, 2014. B, the house is presently located, may restrict the applicant's ability to place a garage, shed, gazebo, or other structure in the side or rear yards of this parcel. C, the house is presently located, may have to be rotated to a different angle to decrease the visibility of the rear of the house by users of Fishkill Hook Road. D, I-84 noise levels should be investigated by the applicant for the building permit. And E, the possible road salt runoff from the surrounding three roads and four front yards should be investigated by the applicant for the building permit. The Town of East Fishkill will be the beneficiary of a defense and indemnification agreement concerning any and all claims due to road salt contamination incurred by the applicant for the building permit and any successors in interest. This is a Type II action under secret, no further compliance is required. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself? I vote no. So, your motion carries. Okay?
Thank you. Great.
All right, item number two, Appeal 3706-Irizzo, Greg Irizzo, 21 Pondview Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting an eight-foot variance for a tower structure located on an addition/garage on his property pursuant to Section 194-101(c) of the zoning ordinance. Want to look for the resolution.
Appeal number 3706, Greg Irizzo. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on October 29th, 2014, whereas the zoning board of appeals had a, held a public hearing on November 12th, 2014, whereas this, this is an application by Greg Irizzo, 21 Pondview Drive, Hopewell Junction, was requesting an eight-foot height variance for an existing tower structure located on an addition garage on his property pursuant to Section 194-101(c) of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance. Section 194-101, height restriction exceptions, provides as follows. See height variations, the height limitation of 35 feet or 2 and 1/2 stories for the R1, R2, and R3 districts may be increased 10 feet for every 100 feet of additional front yard depth which is furnished in excess of the 50 feet minimum front yard depth established in the bulk schedule, provided that any building exceeding the height limit of 35 feet or 2 and 1/2 stories shall not be located with respect to any boundary line or distance less than the height of such building. The applicant's property is approximately 6.62 acres located in the R1 zoning district and has improved a single-family dwelling, by a single-family dwelling. The applicant architect Michael R. Berta, AIA, states in his application to the ZBA, "One, need to legalize the existing tower height. The tower height is plus or minus 44 feet, and closest side yard is 91 feet, and further side yard is 36.5 feet. Plus or minus eight-foot height variances needed. It was self-created. There was a meeting with the owner, architect, and zoning administrator before the construction, and this section was overlooked at the meeting by all." This board's review of the application was held on October 14th, 2014, and a public hearing was held on November 12th, 2014. The applicant and his architect, Mr. Berta, gave a history of the permits, plans, construction, and certificate of occupancy for the structures on his property. In addition, the Building Department put together a chronological, chronology of recent permits and construction items for the applicant's property. There was some confusion about the existing configuration level and use of the addition/garage on the property and the history of the permits, plans, construction, and COs prepared or issued for the applicant's various structures. Essentially, with respect to the addition/garage, the first and second levels are for cars. The next level is for storage. It is an unfurnished area right now and is going to be maintained as such. Finally, the space above is going to be attic storage. Nobody will be living there, and the only access to the area will be by pull-down stairs. Mr. Berta said that there is a set of stairs in the interior of the addition garage building, so no exterior stairs are necessary. The Building Department's chronology--
Chronology.
--provided a compendium of various ZBA application, building permits, and COs for the various structures over the year, most notably for addition garage, the addition/garage building. There are three dates specific, especially relevant to the addition/garage building. 8/29/11, framing inspection issues identified. 7/29/14, received revised plans. 8/11/14, plan review failed. It should be noted that at all times, the applicant had a building permit or renewed building permit for the addition/garage construction work. There are some, there is some confusion with the applicant's plans submitted to the Town Building Department in 2010 and the subsequent discussion between the applicant and the town board, the Town Building Department. Specifically, it appears in 2011 that there was a misinterpretation of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance concerning the height permitted on the town structure, which misinterpretation may have been relied upon by the applicant and the applicant's architect as the maximum height permitted for the tower structure. In addition, the passage of three years in the Town Building Department from the last inspection of the construction work on the addition/garage building since 2000, since August 2011 seemed to have added an additional layer of confusion on the permitted height of the tower structure. Finally, in August 2014, after review of a new set of plans received on July 29th, 2014, the Town Building Department pointed out to the applicant the need for the ZBA application for a height variance for the tower structure. The applicant's self-created hardship here does not appear to be solely self-created by the applicant and his architect. The Town Building Department may have been part of the various layers of confusion here from 2010 to 2014. Therefore, this board concluded on the record that the addition/garage building has been properly permitted, which then allowed the construction that subsequently took place. This board believes that the applicant's tower structure was added only for aesthetic Since the issue before the board is strictly the height of the applicant's tower, tower structure, this board finds as follows. The granting of the height variance will not produce an undesirable change in the characteristic of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. In fact, the closest neighbor to the tower structure wrote one of the two letters received by this board in support of the applicant's application. A second neighbor who lives on the other side of the neighbor above wrote the second letter. The desired result cannot be achieved by some means other than granting a height variance. The tower structure has already been constructed. The height variance is not substantial, it's eight feet. The height variance will not have an adverse impact, effect, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. It is noted that the addition/garage complies with the front and side yard setback requirements. The height variance here was self-created but not solely by the applicant. The several layers of confusion detailed above contributed to the hardship caused here. As a result of the following, this board hereby grants an eight-foot height variance for an existing tower structure located atop the addition/garage on the applicant's property pursuant to Section 194-101(c), subject to the following conditions. No additional features or additional height, spires, or other structures, et cetera, can be added to the tower structure. No building permit shall be allowed to expire, and a CO must be obtained by the applicant on the outstanding building permits. The applicant must submit appropriate plans and complete constructions in compliance with the relevant building codes.
There's no four, that's all part of three. Just keep reading.
Including, if required, installation of sprinklers, handrails, et cetera. The applicant must comply with the memo dated December 3rd, 2014, of the Deputy Zoning Administrator. It is noted that this board's review related to the appeal is strictly limited to the height of the tower of the addition/garage. No other construction elements on the property were reviewed for compliance with the town. This is a Type II action under secret, no further compliance is required. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the owner-applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, you're all set.
Thank you. Make sure you follow me.
Nope, no problem. All right, so, the really easy part is now over. Now we go to the public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening, item number three, Appeal 3701, Bermudas, Martha Bermudas, 24 Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting an 11-foot sideline variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 6-foot sideline variance for the existing pool patio, and a 5-foot sideline variance for the pool equipment pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Go ahead. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so our public hearing is open. Just give me one minute, please, for the, for the benefit of the, anybody who's been here, Miss Bermudas, if you don't mind, if you can come up to the frontier. The board did, has reviewed this application now twice. There, there were some concerns that the building permit filed by the applicant in, that received the building permit, did not, ultimately, the placement of the pool was different than what was represented on the application. That, the application clearly said that the pool was going to be 26 feet in from the property line, so the applicant was aware there was a one-foot room for play. The, the pool subsequently somehow during construction got moved over significantly, and then with this, with the original construction, a patio was built around the pool, an additional patio was added on at some point later, and the second patio with the red decorative stone around it actually ended up encroaching on the neighbor's property. So there's no setback, no setback at all for the patio, and in fact, the, the conditions have now extended onto the neighbor's property. The applicant did, in, as a result of our first conversation, have a conversation or somehow had a conversation with the neighbor about whether they could do a lot line realignment that would have allowed you to get more of this property and your neighbor to get some other portion of your property. Apparently, your neighbor was not interested, so the applicant at our last meeting represented that she was willing to remove part of the patio, move the fence in, and to minimize the variance that would be needed for the patio. It does not change the variance needed for the pool. Subsequent to our last review at our prep meeting last week, I did hear from our, the town engineer that, in fact, this, the town has actually asked a pool owner, or advised a pool owner that, who had placed his pool in the wrong place, to either remove the pool or come to the zoning board, and the owner did actually remove the pool. So that is certainly one of the options that this board needs to consider at this point. So, but at this point, we're here to hear from your neighbors. Is there anything else you'd like to offer, based on my summary, or no?
No, I mean, just to be clear, the red stone, because I know we keep hearing about that, it's not a patio, it's just--
Right, it's decorative stone.
It's decorative stone that was actually put in before the patio that was secondly put in, so that was always around the fence.
Okay.
So you just want to be clear on that. And in terms of, I asked, actually, one of my neighbors to show up, but I asked them not to, most of them not to come, that wasn't necessary, I felt like it was intruding in their time, because I know they have families, so--
That's fine. You have letters?
Letters from them.
I will read these into the record, that's no problem.
Okay. But nothing else, you know, nothing else?
Okay. Oh, they're, okay, they are all different.
Mm-hmm.
The first one is from Robert and Donna Blecchetti.
Blecchetti.
Blecchetti, thank you.
They're my next-door neighbors on my--
32 Canterbury Court.
Yeah, left side.
And again, you are at 24 Canterbury Court. As the next-door neighbor of the Bermudas family, I'm writing on behalf of my family in support of their request for an 11-foot variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 5-foot sideline variance for the existing pool, and a 5-foot variance for the existing pool equipment pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. I have known the Bermudas family for approximately 14 years, and that time period, our families have never had a conflict and consider them to be great neighbors, neighbors that I feel fortunate to call them great friends. Since the completion of the pool, the Bermudas family has been extremely gracious to all the neighbors to enjoy. The Bermudas family has gone out of their way to ensure, to ensure every year that landscaping of the pool area and immediate surroundings always look well-kept. I consider the pool a great addition to our housing development. I encourage the zoning board to approve this, their request for these variances. Letter number one. Letter number two, dated December 8th, from James and Cynthia O'Connor, 27 Canterbury Court. We are writing this letter to inform you we have no objection to a pool variance being granted to Martha Bermudas for her property located at 24 Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, New York. Our home is located directly across the street from the Bermudas residence at 27 Canterbury Court. We have been neighbors with Martha and her family for approximately 15 years, and our families have enjoyed a pleasant relationship throughout that time. Our teenage children have been friends with Martha's sons since they were toddlers, and our daughter routinely babysits for her two young boys. Our children and many other neighbors are routinely welcome to use their beautiful pool throughout the summer. The pool and the surrounding area are always well-maintained, as is the entire property. The Bermudas family has been very generous for many years and are inclusive of their neighbors in sharing what they have. Thank you for your consideration of this letter. Letter number three, Richard and Marie Swanson, 18 Canterbury Court, dated November 25th, 2014. As a neighbor of the Bermudas family, I'm writing on behalf of my family in support of their request for an 11-foot sideline variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 5-foot sideline variance for the existing pool patio, and a 5-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. The Bermudas family has, have, has been great neighbors for the past 14 years. Since their pool was built, they have opened their house to all neighbors to enjoy it during the summer months. I find the pool, its patio and fencing to be aesthetically pleasing to the eye both when on the Bermudas property and from my back deck where I can see it. I encourage the zoning board to approve their request for these variances. And last, William and Nalini Humphrey, 23 Canterbury Court, dated December 8th. Please know that Mrs. Bermudas's swimming pool does not present any problems to us as neighbors. In fact, our children enjoy their pool every summer. So, thank you very much for these. There was one thing I did forget to mention, that a unique circumstance related to your pool was that in closing out your pool permit, you did actually get a certificate of completion from the Town Building Department, who did come out and inspect to be sure that it was constructed properly to enable you to be able to use that pool. And the pool has been there for approximately five years, I think--
Five years.
You've represented it to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any comments or questions from board members? No, is there anyone here to speak for or against? The appeal from Martha Bermudas, 24 Canterbury Court, requesting-- Oh, yeah, requesting an 11-foot sideline variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 5-foot variance, sideline variance for the existing pool patio, and a 6-foot sideline variance for the pool equipment. We're going to ask you to sit down. Come on up. Anybody who's here wishes to speak at a public hearing, we have a sign-in sheet there that we're just going to ask you to print your name over there when you get a chance. Thank you, Mary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. My name is George Weisner. My wife, Maureen, and I live at 20 Canterbury Court. My wife Maureen and I live at 20 Canterbury Court. Our home's northern property line shares a common border with that of 24 Canterbury Court. By way of a brief background, Maureen and I have been married 34 years and have raised two children in the town of East Fishkill. Maureen was a business owner in town for 10 years, and her now adult children attended local schools. We live a quiet life, and my presence here tonight was the last thing I wanted. I am here, though, to ensure those property rights afforded my family are protected. Accordingly, after much forethought and continued anger over the actions of my neighbors residing at 24 Canterbury Court, on June 6th of this year, I filed a zoning complaint because I believe they installed their pool too close to my property in violation of local zoning standards. Board members have been provided a copy of my complaint, and I would now like to expand upon that account. I'm going to ask your indulgence, however, as much of what I say, you have heard before. To begin, I realize any consideration of the variance applications currently under review require a discussion of the Balancing Act facing the board as outlined in Section 267B of New York State Town Law. While I am not presumptuous enough to present myself to you as an expert in this area, the following I believe will be important to your deliberations. In no particular order, I would first like the board to consider the self-created nature of the difficulty now facing my neighbors. I understand this topic does not preclude you from granting their application, but I consider the following to be relevant to your making an informed decision. Simply put, my neighbors have a level one-acre lot, and it appears to me that alternatives to the current placement of their pool were available when it was installed. I believe their pool could and should have been situated within a legal setback. Their building permit, taken on face value, supports this conclusion. The applicant's husband, to the best of my knowledge, hired the unnamed pool contractor to do this installation, and, as I recall, he was present each day I looked during construction and appeared to be overseeing the project. In retrospect, what I remember to be unusual is I never saw our common property line state, nor otherwise identified, before, during, or directly after the installation of this pool. I am now of the opinion my neighbors never knew the exact location of our common property line. That is until I paid a surveyor in May of this year to identify same. That survey unnecessarily cost my family $400. Moreover, for the record, I cannot definitively state the reason for the misplacement of the pool we discuss here tonight, specifically, the departure from the approved plan submitted to the town. I have yet to hear from the applicant an explanation of any kind. I do not know whose decision it was, whether it was intentional or just an oversight which led to this result. I only know my neighbors installed a pool, this pool is very large, and it was located in the wrong position. But with that said, I would also like to bring to the board's attention information which I think provides perspective on this topic. I ask that you examine the paperwork I just provided each board member. It contains copies of both the approved site plan submitted by the applicant for construction of their pool, an edited copy of this plan with architect's overlay, as well as the sewage disposal and system inspection report filed by the Dutchess County Department of Health on 24 February 1999 for my family's home, or for my neighbor's home, Lot 6, 24 Canterbury Court, when it was built. This sewage inspection report details the location of septic system components as installed on my neighbor's property. I obtained both these documents from the town's building department, where they are on file as public records. I also request that you review the attached cover letter from Michael E. Gillespie, professional engineer of the M. Gillespie &amp; Associates Consulting and Engineering Firm located at 847 Route 376, Wapmerge Falls, New York. Mr. Gillespie was the engineer of record for our development, the Canterbury Commons, in 1999, as retained by the developer. I ask Mr. Gillespie to review the aforementioned paperwork for me. In a nutshell, in his professional opinion, the applicant's pool could not have been installed where indicated, because it conflicted with the effluent discharge line connecting the home's septic tank to the distribution box. He further indicates an alternative to the homeowner would have been to reroute sections of the septic system. Please note, to the best of my knowledge, I do not believe changes to the applicant's septic system are contained in his pool site plan. I offer this information to the board sans personal comment or opinion. I ask board members to draw their own conclusions and place whatever significance they deem appropriate on this material, to assist in the decision-making process. In any event, referencing this misplaced pool again, now, we find my family and future families are being asked to live permanently with what some would term an imprudent decision, and this board is being asked to legitimize those choices. Most importantly, however, getting to the gist of this issue, I ask this board the following rhetorical question. Does a property owner, as a matter of strict liability in application of law, bear the ultimate responsibility for zoning compliance of any structure, including a pool, constructed on his or her property? I think you'll agree the answer is yes. Next, I would like the board to consider the magnitude of the variances requested by my neighbors. First, obviously, they are not asking for a single variance, they are asking for three variances. It is apparent several things were done incorrectly. Furthermore, based upon my neighbor's own survey, only recently updated at the behest of the town on July 25th of this year, the water portion of their pool, at its closest point to our common property line, measures 15.6 feet, not the 26 feet represented to the town. Their pool patio, as currently configured, is 7.2 inches from my property, 7.2 inches, and is proposed to be moved to a mere 10 feet. The unsightly cluster of pool pump, filter, plastic piping, heater, electrical boxes, wooden supports, and concrete base, all easily visible from anywhere in my backyard are, at the closest point, just 5.2 feet from our common property line. And, just to provide perspective to this discussion, a portion of their crushed decorative stone and brick trim, which they learned six months ago encroached directly upon my property, has yet to be removed. I admit, I am infuriated that they have so little to no regard for my property boundary. Ladies and gentlemen, in any event, ladies and gentlemen, please note, you are not being asked to forego a few inches or a few feet. You are being asked to endorse a distinct departure from accepted code. In offering support for this statement, combining the total distance of my neighbor's variance applications, which I believe case law allows, we find you are being asked to sanction a 25-foot departure from existing convention, or a deviation of 46.6% from established zoning regulations of the town of East Fishkill, averaging all three variance components, 46.6%. I believe this is an extraordinary request, totally unacceptable, and a substantial deviation from applicable requirements. I ask that you not reward someone for failing to do what's required by law, and I suggest anything less than a denial for each and every variance requested would be doing just that. I would also like to touch upon this issue of neighborhood and character thereof. The applicant's swimming pool is the first pool on Canterbury Court. There are 17 homes on our cul-de-sac, and dozens more in our immediate neighborhood. To the best of my knowledge, theirs is the first pool on our street. Other families have contemplated the installation of their own pools, and this board has already ruled upon a recent variance application by my neighbor residing at 19 Canterbury Court. You denied it. His property is located across the street from the applicant whose variance you now consider. I believe this is important. Important because I propose, in denying this earlier request, this board set a standard. You affirm the safeguards local zoning regulations afforded the other adjacent property owners in my neighborhood. In your wisdom, you establish this precedent. I ask that you remain steadfast to your commitment to consistent application and enforcement of zoning regulations and provide my family the same protections. I know we agree that the even-handed enforcement of zoning policy is the foundation of our community. Please consider this in denying the application before you now. To try to keep this concise, I would like to finish with what I consider the most important and personal element of the Balancing Act now facing you. I believe the law requires that you consider the detriment or potential detriment to nearby properties in coming to your decision, and while this landmark decision will have long-term consequences for our neighborhood, please understand, my family and I currently deal with this condition on a daily basis. Words alone do not adequately express how troubled we feel by the placement of this pool and associated equipment so close to our home and property. I am 63 years of age and have worked and saved for 40 years to provide this residence for my family. We are happy to live in this town, and, as I would imagine is the case with most board members here tonight, my family's single largest investment is our home. And, in point of fact, notwithstanding the stress of living with our neighbor's pool so close, and notwithstanding the resulting comments from family and friends who visit and ask, "Why is that pool so close?", or incredibly, my ability to see the color of my neighbor's swimming pool water while standing at my kitchen sink. I have another concern I wish to share with the board. I am contemplating retirement. No specific plans have been made, and I have been made, and my wife and I are hoping for many years of backyard enjoyment with our grandchildren. But, I also believe there may come a day when we decide to sell our home. On that day, I propose to you all, should one prospective buyer be put off, or others place less value on my home because of the proximity of my neighbor's swimming pool than the potential detriment to my family should be apparent. And while I have empathy for the issues now facing my neighbors, my family and I had no involvement in creating these circumstances. I remind you all, we are here solely because of the applicant's failure to follow the law and the refusal to redress it. Ladies and gentlemen, I have been left few alternatives. I did not look for this disagreement, I wanted to avoid this disagreement, but be assured, I will take all necessary steps to protect the value and integrity of the property I have worked so hard to obtain. I have tried to be a patient and considerate neighbor. This should be evident from the timeline detailed in my initial complaint. In closing, the bottom line is, this pool should never have been installed where positioned. No sheltering, planting a shrubbery, or any other attempt to hide its location changes this fact. Therefore, I am now looking to this board to not compound, but to correct this error and follow its legal mandate, and provide my family protection from the unconsidered decisions of others, and preserve those property rights afforded to us by law. I ask that you employ those necessary standards of the post-1992 Balancing Act, of which I know you are all familiar, and deny any and all applications currently under consideration. And finally, I ask that you additionally please take a moment and review a recent New York State appellate division third department decision titled Town of Chatham versus Lilly Smith, decided 24 July 2014, wherein the court affirmed that town's motion for summary judgment forcing the movement of a pool installed in violation of local setback requirements. I have the citation if required. Again, thank you all for providing me an opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any and all questions that this time board members may have. But before I do so, I would also like to bring to the board's attention that I believe my neighbor's pool and pump variance request as listed on the agenda is wrong. It's listed as five feet, while I hope it's academic, I believe it should require a minimum of 10 feet. Thank you all again.
Why do you suggest it should be 10 feet? How far in from the property line?
It's 5.2 feet from my property line. I believe the law provides for 15 feet, therefore, it requires a 10-foot variance. I have a picture here, if you'd like.
Patios require 10 foot, I mean a 15-foot. Patios require, but pool equipment requires 25 feet.
Well, then it's even worse.
So how did we arrive at the 5 feet?
That's what Mrs. Bermudas came in. After the last week.
Can I address that? I brought the map, and I said I wasn't sure, and I wrote the measurements when I came to your office, and I told you to put in. So I said, "I don't know, I don't know how to read this map out." I told you that I was trying to get a proper layout, to explain the measurements. But I brought it up, but before I wrote it to you now, I said, "You can tell me how to read this."
Excuse me, can you just move the mic?
If you use the mic, you'd be on record.
Yeah, so we can, you're on record. Can you just move the mic?
Okay, well...
Oh, okay.
I'm not actually done with this gentleman yet, so...
Okay, sorry.
So let's hold you off, Mrs. Bermudas, because there may be other things that you may need to address as well. So, your neighbor did approach you, I believe, about a lot line realignment. How close is your house physically to your property line?
I think by standard, it's got to be 50 feet.
No, it's got to be...
It needs to the side.
What?
It needs 25 feet.
25 feet, right, 25 feet to the side.
25 feet, okay, 25, the minimum.
You think it's the minimum?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
It's so close. It's so close. When they had their structure there for the chase lounges and stuff, when I stand at the top of my driveway, it's as close as almost for me to you. I mean, and, you know, as an aside, you heard, we listened to the letters of the neighbors, and I mean, and they're, the Bermudas are wonderful people, they're wonderful people, and unfortunately, up until this point, I've never had a problem with them. Unfortunately, there is a lot of pool activity.
Right.
Virtually the whole neighborhood comes, and, well, that's fine, but it's right in my backyard.
Right.
I can't, it's intolerable. And I have, I waited a good period of time to try to get used to this, and quite frankly, I can't, and my family can't, and it's troubled me. It's physically troubled me for the better part of a year. I have made overtures, I have tried. As it turns out, I was summarily rejected. So quite frankly, we're at this stage in the process, I want those protections that the law provides, I want those protections that you provided, those neighbors across the street that live adjacent to 19. You, as I've said, and I'm repeating myself, in your wisdom, you adopted this precedent, you established the recreational nature, the recreational nature of a pool, versus those rights that I have, and I believe and I demand, that I have entitled and coming to me as a resident of the town of East Fishkill.
So you don't, I know in your letter, or in your statement, you said that you don't believe screening would help, so you don't think a solid fence or anything like that would help?
It's too...
We just need to get it on the record.
Yes, yes. At this juncture, I would want...
They're not, they don't believe they'd give you enough...
Correct.
...protection from the noise and...
Correct.
...other activity associated with the use of the pool.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Also, I guess, in the same vein, that if they, you mentioned that the pool equipment is an ISO, and so providing some coverage for the pool equipment would not be acceptable to you. Is that my assumption correct?
The pool, if, the pool equipment is probably the farthest element of this pool configuration from my house. If there was to be some type of fencing that provided me with the inability to see it, that would be, that would be fine. But the issue is the pool. The pool is right there. It's right there in my backyard. And when that pool is being actively used in midsummer by a number of people that it accommodates, it's just impossible. It's impossible for my family to enjoy our summer. We are, it's my wife and I, we're quiet people, and I'm not by any sense trying to limit my neighbor's ability to have a pool. I don't mind pools. Just put it where it belongs. Put it where the law says that it should be to protect me and everyone else in the town from whatever decisions were made to create this mess. And again, I've been living with this for a long time, and it's taken a physical toll. And my, and believe me, my children are worried about me, because every time, you know, it is just so incredibly in my face every time I'm in my backyard. And quite frankly, I have gotten no consideration, I have gotten no consideration from my neighbors, none whatsoever. And as I said, that crushed stone, that brick trim, six months ago, they found out that was on my property, it's still there. Do I got to remove it? What am I missing? What am I missing? Is there a presumption of responsibility to say, "Oh my goodness, I put that inadvertently on my neighbor's property, perhaps I should move it"? Nothing. Nothing. I'm, I am fed up.
On the letter that you provided to us from Mr. Gillespie, it indicates that there's a, the effluent line that runs through, in essence, where her pool should have been, which, by the way, would be a reason to grant a variance, but, but do you, by any, Mike's not providing it. Did he happen to mention how far in from your property line that line is?
No.
Okay, 'cause that would indicate whether she actually can move it or not to where it should be.
I, I felt the need for my own purposes to determine and/or investigate if there was a reason or an apparent reason why that pool was located where it was.
Okay.
I made those inquiries. It became very apparent to me. I'm not a professional. I don't know what I'm looking at, and I felt the only other element to provide that representation to the board would be a professional engineer's opinion.
Okay.
Again, I saw the thing, and, and it bothers me that you have, I mean, there's an existing septic tank and existing effluent line, a distribution box, and an existing field, and from the, what is being provided to us, the pool is right on top of the effluent line.
No, it would have been.
That would have been, that would have happened if it had been put in the right place.
If it had been put in, in accordance with what she submitted to the building department, it appears it would have been interfering with the line.
Ah, I see.
Which is probably one of the reasons why it was moved over. Because they realized they couldn't disturb their septic line.
Okay, yeah, again, I'm, I thought this was, so basically, this, so it was moved a distance away from the effluent line to where it is placed, and this was done five years ago, is that approximately?
Whenever the pool was installed.
And again, the thing is, you have to also understand that the applicant came to the town, got the permits, had it installed, had, you know, a closure of the permits, et cetera. So the applicant did follow our procedure. Unfortunately, their understanding, I mean, they should have had a survey done to make sure. That they're trying to do it the right thing, and again, if it was, if the, if the effluent line was in the way, they should have come back to the board or to the town and say, "Okay, I have this problem," but they didn't address it, they just, so I do not know really what happened.
With, with all due respect, Mr. Hassan. So my family, with that being said, now, I don't know where the system broke down, but what I'm here trying to defend is that my family has the potential of having to look at that pool for as long as we reside at 20 Canterbury Court. That, sir, is not fair. You would not like that, and I'm trying to be, with all due respect, you would not like that, I believe, nor any board member here would like that if it were your property that you were fighting for right now. And I just ask each and every one of you to be, to understand the position I'm in. You know, I, I don't know what decisions are gonna come forth at this board. I, I really don't, and it bothers me, 'cause I've done nothing wrong. I'm trying to live my life, I pay my taxes, I, I look to you. I look to the building department. I look to the Town of East Fishkill to provide me those protections. And, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything. All I'm saying is that I'm here now, and I shouldn't have to be.
And we respect that. I do have to remind you, though, this is a public hearing, and we have to base our decision based on the information that comes out at the public hearing.
I understand.
So board members will be asking you questions, and you're helping us establish a record that supports our decision.
Duly noted.
Okay?
Duly noted.
So please, I don't want you getting upset with the questions that are being asked.
Duly noted. I apologize.
Again, the reason I'm, I'm, let me lay the foundation for my questioning. The reason is, if this issue had served, come to this board five years ago, we would be making a decision whether to grant a variance or not. Okay? Because if they had started, they got the building permit to put a pool five years or six years ago, whatever the period of time, period was, when the pool person came to start, may have, start digging, they may have realized that there's a septic tank, an effluent line, a distribution box in the way, so they may have, on their own, decided to move it without coming to the town or to the building department, explaining that we are moving it by five, ten, fifteen, whatever the, the thing was. If they had come, you know, if they, if they were aware of it, not aware of it, however it happened, that's what I'm trying to establish and understand, that why did they move it from what the applicant, and again, I do not know. I wasn't there, and so I'm just trying to understand, maybe that was the reasoning behind it. And again, if five years ago, if they had approached us, then you'd be coming and explaining that this should be denied, and we would have, you know, heard you and then the applicant and made a decision at that point. But the pool is already there, that they followed the procedure to set the pool. Now it's up to us, now we are here. Now, again, the issue that you raised about the, the stone and the, and part of it encroaching, sometimes what happens is, when you, when there's a body, boundary line or lot line disagreement, sometimes they have to sort of let everything be where it is until it's resolved by the parties, or by the court, or by a zoning board, or whatever the recommendation comes out to be. So sometimes people usually make a decision to just leave it as it is, so that they don't destroy the evidence or whatever it is. So eventually, she has to remove it, so whether it's gonna be, you know, next week or until our decision or whenever, but once this issue is resolved, she will be removing it, and I think she's already made it, made it clear, that whatever is encroaching on your property directly will be removed, and that's something that's gonna, you're gonna get it.
Aziz is a really good point there. The SEACR Act, okay, the State Environmental Quality Review Act actually requires that once an application's been filed with the board, they cannot make physical changes to their property until the board makes its determination. All right? So again.
Understand my question.
We understand what you're saying. Understand, though, there is a restriction on her right now that she really can't move it. Okay?
Might I respond? Had, had that happened, had, had that sequence of events you just described happened, again, it's difficult to reference five years ago versus recent history, but as I, I tried to put forth in my statement, this, this board's position on, on pool variance applications have been, has been duly noted and very stringent, very, very stringent. And I just, I just wonder, had that taken place, had that circumstances, that set of facts taken place, whether they would have been allowed to put the pool where it is, based on your current standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that wishes to offer comments? Mrs. Bermudas, could we ask you to come back up? What is the size of this pool?
Twenty by forty.
Twenty by forty? So in its width, the, the, the side that would be impacting your neighbor the most, it is, that's the twenty-foot side, the twenty-foot? I know it's, it's the length of it, but it's really the, you could have only really, for an in-ground pool, probably made it sixteen feet as opposed to the twenty.
Oh, I have no idea.
Okay, in terms of pool sizes, okay. Okay, the survey that you provided to the town, it appears that you did in fact mark that the pool equipment is five feet in from the property line. So, so that, then it does appear that the noticing was not right. Yeah, so this is actually a twenty-foot variance that's needed for the pool equipment, unless you have the ability to move it.
I mean, if I'm, again, depends on, ideally, no, because we put it back there. If we're gonna stay with the pool where it is, I mean, it requires all the piping to be moved, so I don't know if you can. I mean, let me actually.
Well, but again, part, part of the disturbance is, you've heard from your neighbor, is the noise.
Yeah.
Pool filters make noise.
Right.
Especially in the dead of night, when they kick on, because you have the chemicals circulating and stuff.
So for the noise factor, the pool equipment, it's the furthest away from his house.
Understood.
In fact, it was originally gonna be put right next to our home, which would be directly next to his garage, which would still be, actually would have been legal there, it would have been twenty-five feet away.
Right.
But that would actually be noisier, and, you know, at his request, when we talked about, you know, when we were putting our pool in, we said to, we put it here, and he said, "Actually, I work in my garage all the time. I would rather not, because as pools age, it gets noisier." So we actually took it all the way to the back at his request.
Okay.
So, you know, we actually cost us more money to have the equipment run the lines even further back than it would have been where we originally intended it to go.
Okay, we, we addressed his concern that it was five feet. You, in fact, did provide the information that it was five feet. So I just want to acknowledge, it was not your error for that five feet, and we do appreciate the pictures that your neighbor provided. Pam, I'll get those to you in a second for the record. No other neighbors had any comment, so are there any other comments or questions from board members? If not, I would suggest that we close and reserve.
You got my memo, correct?
We did get your memo.
Okay, because of the, of the proper incorrect advertising.
It wasn't her error. It was ours.
Okay, so should, do we need to re-advertise or?
Council?
The variance is going from what to what, what number?
From five.
Five feet to twenty feet.
It should put people on notice.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
So what we're gonna have to do, rather than close and reserve, is we're gonna have to actually re-advertise the public hearing. We're gonna have to have you come up, get back again next month.
Okay.
Because your neighbors should have the right to know that it's not a five-foot variance, it's actually a twenty-foot variance for that pool equipment. Okay?
Okay.
So you're gonna need to keep your sign up, you'll need to correct the date on it, for January.
Okay.
All right? And then, you know, at that point, we'll issue a decision, maybe not in January, but, okay?
I do, I do wanna say one more thing. I know he was, in hearing what the complaint about our pool, I guess lawn chairs, I mean, they're, they're not from here to you. You can come out of my property if you'd like to see where they are. We have a deck behind our house, and then we have another probably fifteen feet before the wall, and so, I mean, yes, of course, you can see, I can see my neighbor's houses, three houses down, deck from my backyard, and my neighbor's neck on this side, so we have an open lot back, so you can see it from everywhere, but it's not there, and we're actually not a very noisy family to begin with. We don't throw our crazy parties. You know, this year, we actually put a bamboo fence that goes up and down. We put it on purpose to provide a little bit more, that we put it on that side, all the way down the sideline, so there is coverage, so he doesn't have to see it. Now, the noise, you know, noise carries whether you have something or not, but we're not, we're not party-ers, we don't throw, you know, we don't have crazy things going on. You know, most of our neighbors don't even, you know, hear us. They come over, we enjoy it in the daytime, in the afternoon, we're not there till all hours of the night. I have small children, one is three, one is five. Sometimes we may, as adults, hang out a couple in the backyard, we're not screaming at the top of our lungs.
Right.
I haven't thrown a party there in ten years, except for my son's fifth birthday party. So, you know, I just wanna establish that. We also lead a quiet life. We don't, we're not, we're not very noisy people, and my neighbors can attest to that if you would like them to write another letter, just to say we're not noisy people and not going crazy. You know, we're enjoying the nice summer days like anybody else, and we welcome our neighbors to do the same, and once it gets to be dusk, we all go into our homes and it's back to being a quiet night. So just wanna point that out as you consider.
Yep. Thank you.
One of the issues that came up, and I think, maybe you have an answer, maybe you don't, I don't, right now, your neighbor has provided us with a letter from Mike Gillespie, and basically, had you put your pool where you had proposed to do, it would have been right on top of your, near your existing septic tank and on top of your existing effluent line. Were these one of the factors that made you move it?
I know, we dug where we dug, we didn't dig around, so the hole went in where he put it in. Our septic tank is by our deck. I don't know what, what an effluent line is, or what it, you know, where it goes, I have no idea where it is.
Okay.
But the tank, I know, because we have it cleaned out, or whenever it comes clean, it's right by our, our deck doors, almost, actually. When you come out of our deck, it's, my, my sliding door's here, and the, the pump, the hole is there.
But your husband, your, your neighbor's commented that your husband was supervising the construction?
Yeah, he would, I mean.
To the best of your knowledge, he was, he was in fact supervising the.
I mean, he was out there, yeah, when he came to dig, to make sure, I mean, he was actually watching the kids, I was at the office, he was home with the baby, so, but yeah, I mean, he would go out there and check to see what he was doing. I mean, he's not an expert on pool building either, and neither am I, or, or lot lines or anything of that. He would just make, you know, checking in on the guys like anybody else would, I guess.
I think one thing that, that we should just, again, get on the record, because the purpose of public, happening in a public hearing is to, all the information that we did in our first review, you did mention that initially, one of the reasons your pool is in the direction and in the location that it is, was because you thought that the line of trees.
Yeah.
Was your property line.
Yeah, we did.
And, and in fact, even though you marked it on the survey, but in, in, in point of fact, your, your survey line is, is different than the line of trees.
Yes, it is. And again.
You did raise that to our attention, so I just.
That we just thought that was it, so it just visually looked like it was about right. We didn't go out and measure from the trees to the, you know, we didn't do that. I mean, in hindsight, yes, we should have probably had somebody come out and do a survey, but we went by what needed to be done, that the pool guy did. We were, you know, we paid him to do everything, from soup to nuts, so, you know, I just assumed he knew what he was doing, and we were going by what he, he did.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Excuse me. If you look at this, this line is fifteen feet.
Fifteen point six.
Right. The filter is in this way more. When Mrs. Bermudas came in and drew this on here, we figured that the filter was about twenty feet away. That's why she needed the five foot.
Oh, so who, who wrote the five foot?
Mrs. Bermudas.
But so the five foot was not referring to how far in it was?
No, it's what she needs.
All right, that conflicts with the picture that you see from the neighbor.
No, I wrote what I, what was from the, you told me to mark the pool equipment and measure to the line and write how much that was. So that's what I wrote on there, and that's what I brought in.
But if this is fifteen feet, the filter.
And, and that was a confusion you and I had that day, that we didn't understand.
Let's stick with the error on the side of question here. Let's go with the twenty feet.
Yeah, and that's what I, I've been trying to hold of.
Picture that shows the five feet, let's, okay, let's be clear on that.
Obviously, the next time around, it doesn't have to be as extensive as this time around.
Right. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn to January?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We'll see you next month. Please change your sign.
Change your sign to, what's, okay. What's the date of the next?
January fourteenth.
Thirteen.
January thirteenth.
Thirteen, okay.
And if it is a snow, then we do it in February.
Yeah.
Next year. Just know February.
Okay, item number four, appeal three seven zero nine, Brown, Willwood Brown, three Nathan Hale Drive Stormville is requesting a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing twelve foot by sixteen foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Tara?
Aye.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'd have to say those opposed.
Sorry.
All right, so we are opened. Mr. Brown, okay, we did review your application last month. One of the things that sticks out in my mind was that you actually did call the building department before you put up the shed, and in fact, you're the person that put the shed up, and you asked for your side yard, how long, how, what the distance was required. You were told twenty-five feet. Unfortunately, you didn't acknowledge that, or you didn't recognize that you have a corner lot. And so on a corner lot, you actually have two front yards. And so if the building department had known it was a corner lot, they would have told you fifty feet. But again, you, you rightfully so called the building department to check what the appropriate location was, so, and I think we all understood that it was certainly not done with any, you know, misintent or anything like that. You know, you did take the, the advance notice of calling. know, you did take the, the advance notice of calling, so, so that being said, we, we talked about your, the location of the shed, where it makes, you know, whether, whether there's the ability to move the shed or not, you have a cemetery to your-
Direct rear of the house.
To the rear of the property, even though it's technically, again, in your side yard, so again, you're not, you're not gonna have any neighbors that are gonna be disturbed by that, well, not any ones we really worried about.
No one's complained yet.
But again, so that, so the most impact, the, the property that is most impacted by the location of the shed would be the cemetery?
Yes.
Okay, well, it is what it is, all right, so that being said, any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anything else you'd like to offer, in terms of an explanation for your neighbors?
No, not at all.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Willard Brown, three Nathan Hale Drive Stormville, requesting a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing twelve foot by sixteen foot shed?
Do you have a fence issue?
Yeah, you were going to include that.
Because he's got a-
I have a, I have a-
Oh, that's right.
Eight-foot- Section of six-foot fence, and then a, then a, another eight-foot section that goes from five foot to three foot.
Okay.
That's what we're, I was unaware that you weren't allowed to put that one piece of six-foot fence up there.
Because that's now in the front yard also.
Yes.
Not knowing that that was my front yard, but, you know.
Did he put it up what?
Pam, I can't hear you.
He used to have to come to the board, but he didn't have any kind of comment, he didn't have a board approval, or, they used to have to come to the board to get approval for fences, now they get a permit, I don't know, when, when was that fence put up?
The same time the shed, you know, I can cut the fence down, I, I have no problem getting rid of the fence, I just, I thought it was aesthetic, that's, you know.
Because we were only concerned with a portion of it, that you didn't actually have to cut the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole fence is only twenty-two feet long.
Right.
And two sections of it are a gate that I open, and there's a piece about three feet, that's six foot high, and the other section is three feet high.
Right.
So it's kind of, it's kind of a weird design.
The dipography was a little bit off, I think you said, and so-
The hill comes down from the road.
Right, and so, that's what we actually talked about, that it wasn't necessarily that it was an issue, and you were willing to cut it down, was my recollection, so, all right, so as long as you're, if you're okay with that, then we can proceed this evening, otherwise, we'll have to re-notice your application as well.
No, I'll, I'll cut it down, you know, I'll cut it down to three feet, whatever, what's the, what's-
Four feet.
Four feet, I'd cut it down to four feet.
I mean, only in the front part?
Only, right, only in the front of the rear line of your house, so any portion that's behind the rear line of your house would be okay?
Well, it's all behind the rear line of the house.
Now, because that would run parallel now with Lee Town Road.
It doesn't run parallel to Lee Town, runs-
It runs perpendicular.
Perpendicular to Lee Town Road.
Which is the front yard.
Unfortunately, you've got two front yards.
Right. The house is perpendicular to Lee Town, facing Nathan Hale, and the fence runs perpendicular off the shed.
Okay, let's cut it down to four feet.
Fine.
Let's just-
No problem.
It's the easiest all around for everybody, as long as you're in agreement with that, let's, let's stick with that, because you don't ever want anybody having to question-
No.
-where it is, and all the rest of it, so, that being said, and there's no other neighbors to speak for or against, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, this is appeal number thirty-seven oh nine, applicant is Willard R. Brown, Jr., requesting a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing twelve feet by sixteen foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, the property is located at three Nathan Hale Drive Stormville, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant has applied for the zoning board for a twenty-three foot front line variance for an existing twelve feet by sixteen foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type two action of the seeker, and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Ditches News on December third, twenty fourteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December ninth, twenty fourteen, and whereas this is a corner lot, and the existing twelve feet by sixteen foot shed has been in the location for years, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable effect, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, because the applicant has a corner lot, and has limited yard area in which to place a shed, because this is an odd-shaped lot, areas of which have a fifteen-person grade and a placement of pool without, placement of a pool without requiring a variance, okay, the variance requested is not substantial, and was not created by the applicant, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, now therefore we'd be, be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Willard R. Brown, Jr., three Nathan Hale Drive Stormville, who is requesting a twenty-three feet front line variance for an existing twelve feet by sixteen foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, we note that Mr. Brown has agreed to reduce his fence by no, by the shed to be no taller than four feet, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, can I talk to Pam, please, so she has the amendment? All right, item number five, appeal three seven one zero, Cow, K O?
K O.
K O, sorry, Catherine K O., nineteen Ninam Avenue, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a one-foot sideline variance for an existing house in order to build a second-story addition, a four-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, and an eleven-foot sideline, and eleven-foot rear line variance for an existing eight-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash one twenty-one, one ninety-four dash ninety-three, and one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right, now, we did review this last time, when you were here last month, again, the issue is, it's an existing house, you're obviously not gonna move the house, all you're looking to do is a second floor addition to the house, in looking at the property, the, that we, we noted there was a patio and a shed, neither of which was put on the property by you when, when you guys purchased the house, those features were already there, I think that's pretty much it, I mean, you're really just looking to improve the property, right, so nothing else you necessarily need to add?
Not really.
Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
All right, so is there anyone here to speak for or against the application of Catherine K O., nineteen Ninam Avenue, Wappingers Falls, requesting a one-foot sideline variance for an existing house in order to build a second-story addition, a four-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, and an eleven-foot sideline, and eleven-foot rear line variance for an existing eight-foot by twelve-foot shed, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is appeal number thirty-seven, and applicant is Catherine K O., requesting a one-foot sideline variance for an existing house in order to build a second-story addition, a four-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, and eleven-foot sideline, and eleven-foot rear line variance for an existing eight feet by twelve feet shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one, one ninety-four dash ninety-three, and one ninety, and section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant has applied to the zoning board for a one-foot sideline variance for an existing house, including a new construction of a second-story addition, a four-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, and eleven-foot sideline, and eleven-foot rear line variance for an existing eight feet by twelve feet shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one, one ninety-four dash ninety-three, and one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type two action of the seeker, and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Ditches News on December third, twenty fourteen, and whereas the section, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December ninth, twenty fourteen, and whereas the existing house was built in nineteen sixty-four, and is six feet away from the side yard, oh, six feet-
Inches? Six inches?
Six inches.
Yes, six inches.
Six inches.
Fifty-six four, and is, and is six inches away from the side yard setback line, and the owner would like to add a second story to the house, the existing patio is eleven feet from the side yard setback line, and the existing eight feet by twelve feet shed is fourteen feet in from the side yard and rear, rear yard property lines, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, as the house, patio, and shed, shed have been in existence for many years, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this is a small lot, zero point five seven acres, the variance requested is not substantial, and has, and was not created by the applicant, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood, now therefore we had resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Catherine K O., nineteen Ninam Avenue, Wappingers Falls, for a one-foot, one-foot sideline variance for an existing house in order to build a second-story addition to, addition, a four-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, and an eleven-feet sideline, and an eleven-feet rear line variance for an existing eight-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one, one ninety-four dash ninety-three, and one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. All right, we're done for public hearings, so I'm gonna guess that the four of you who are remaining are our four applicants, so, the reason the public hearings and the decision goes so quickly is because we spend a lot of time during the review, making sure we understand what you're looking for and why, so that we prepare you for the public hearing and if your neighbors come and have concerns or anything, so, let's start with item number six, appeal three seven zero eight, Jenkins, Trent Jenkins, thirty-one Turkey Run, Hopeful Junction, requesting a seven foot, seventeen-foot rear line variance for a proposed twelve-foot by twelve-foot lean-to, and a two-foot rear line variance for an existing twelve-foot by sixteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, again, we're starting fresh, we, we have your application, but we just need you to explain, like, the existing shed, did you put that there, was it there already when you bought the property, tell us what you're looking to do.
Yeah, the existing shed, we put up when we first moved there.
Okay, how long ago?
We had the house built in, I think it was ninety-nine, early two thousand.
Okay, so it's been there approximately fourteen years?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we had it put up, the gentleman that was putting down the foundation claims he went to the building department and said that it was fifty feet from the rear line, and then when I measured it, it was forty-eight feet.
Okay.
The lean-to shed, I'm looking to put in, in the rear of our house, because that's the most level portion of our property, if you go west of the property and south, it starts to slope down.
Define a lean-to, it doesn't have a door?
It doesn't have a door, it's three sides with a slanted roof.
Oh, I mean, I know what it looks like, it reminds me, sorry, of a little house on the prairie.
Yeah, after you store the wood.
It's, yeah, exactly, okay, that was exactly what I was thinking, most people would use it to store wood, so-
That's exactly what it's-
That's, that's your purpose, okay, so you're really just looking for a cover, a nicely done, covered area to store wood?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and, and what's, how depth, what's the depth of it, twelve-foot by?
Uh, it's twelve by twelve, is what I'd like to build there.
That's pretty deep, that's a lot of wood.
Yeah, well, we burn a lot of wood.
Okay.
Oil, well, oil's coming down now, wood's probably gonna be more expensive.
Save your wood for next year.
Is it easy to get to?
Excuse me?
In, in winter, if it's-
Oh, yeah, it's, 'cause it's directly behind the house, and our sliding rear doors are-
Right there.
Are right there, yeah.
Do we have many lean-tos? I'm assuming it's allowed by code, right, it's just part of the structure? Right, even though it's attached to the house, right?
Well, no, this is not attached.
Oh, it's not attached to the house, oh, okay, so, okay. Yeah, I guess I should look at what you're drawing here, huh?
We had one recently that was attached to a shed.
Right, yeah, we had someone wanting to piggyback off your shed.
Yeah, normally, they put it on the, but that's, I don't know, seventy-five feet away from the house, so in the wintertime, going over to the shed where the existing shed is, if there was a lean-to on the back of that, to trudge the wood back to the houses.
So you have a flag lot?
Yes.
You're behind-
It's tucked back, our driveway is, I think, five hundred and thirty feet tucked back, and-
Wow.
There's woods on one, two, three, three sides.
Okay.
Yeah.
And neighbors behind you?
The neighbors behind us are in La Grange, we back right up to La Grange.
Are they far back?
Yeah, their house-
Do you give notice?
Well, there's, whoops, probably about thirty to forty foot of woods from our property line to where his grass starts in his rear, rear yard, and then we have maybe ten feet of trees from our property line to where our grass kinda starts.
This, since this property borders La Grange, are we required to give notice to?
Do we directly, directly, or how far is La Grange property?
Oh, right over our, our stone wall.
And they should be noticed.
We just have to give them time to respond.
Okay. What's the finish of it gonna be, I mean, what's it gonna look like?
It's gonna be-
It's gonna look like your existing house?
I should've bought, I, I made a drawing, I didn't-
If you could bring him in for next time, that would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, it's gonna be all pressure-treated wood.
Natural color, or?
Actual color, yeah.
Natural, okay, so, but realistically, based on the fact that you have a five-hundred-plus foot long driveway, are, is either, any, are any of your neighbors, is this gonna be visible to them?
It will be visible to my neighbor at thirty-three Turkey Run, the woods, but then again, it might not be, because there's, it'll be visible in the wintertime and fall, but in the-
When the leaves are down.
Yeah, in the summertime as well.
Is, is, I'm sorry, to answer, to follow up on that, is there, is there some reason you couldn't change its location, so it wouldn't be visible to them?
The only other place, I guess, would be far to the west of the property, you see where the other shed is?
Yeah.
If you go, if you go past there?
Past there?
Yeah.
But then, not in dead of winter, you don't wanna be out there-
No, but then I'd have to clear trees also to put it over there, because it-
That's not the idea. Yeah. Okay.
There's, is that a car, on the area?
Yeah. Car or a car? No, that, depending on when this was taken, that might be my wood drop, or, I don't know when this was taken, um, it might be wood, but, yeah, that's, that, this area here is private, using a car, or-
And what can I finish, are you gonna put on the-
It's gonna be natural.
Okay, so it'll be the wood, so again, if it is cleansed in?
Yeah, yeah.
Why, why are we saying that the shed is in a rear yard, folks? You wanna come take a look at it, real quick? Why is that not the side yard, with only a twenty-five foot requirement?
It's showing forty-five feet.
Huh?
It's showing forty-five feet.
No, 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 it's this one, the one on the other side.
Yeah, that's in the front.
Oh, 'cause it's in the front of the, it's in the front of the house, of the rear line of the house, that's what it is.
So it's not a rear yard?
It's not in the rear.
Right, it's a side, it's a, but it's, but because it's in the front of the rear line of the house, that's the, more the issue, but is that what it says on there?
No, that's a separate application, I mean, that's sort of, he, he came for this, this thing, not for this one, it's already existing.
He's coming for both, I thought.
He's coming for both.
He needs a two-foot rear line variance for the shed, existing shed-
Oh, oh, okay, okay, okay.
Because it's forty-eight feet from the rear line.
Right, that's what I was alluding to earlier, when-
Okay, that's what, I thought forty-eight was referring to this, but it's also in front of the rear line of the house, right, Mary, we need to address that? All right, so Pam, can we add that to the noticing? And again, you can't move that shed any closer, because you've got your sewage disposal area right in the front, really-
And you can't see that shed, no neighbor can see that shed.
Okay, and, and you thought you, again, two feet for that one, you thought you were putting it in the right place.
And even if he stood back, he would just be increasing that.
Right, to disturb, disturbance of the house. Right, okay, any other questions from board members, if not?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, Pam, we'll give you your instructions for your, and then we'll see you back again next month.
Okay.
You know, you have to get a sign note, that's the important thing, she'll give you your instructions. You know, you have to get a sign note, that's the important thing. She'll give you your instructions. All right, item number seven, Appeal 3711, Burisi, Michael Burisi, One Willow Drive, Hopple Junction, is requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence in front of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. You have the distinction of my, the fact that I drive by your house every day on my way home.
Well, good, I hope it's easy on your own.
And it's a beautiful fence, I do have to tell you, but as it was going up, I'm saying, hmm, that's awfully tall. So, it really is a, you've done a great job with the fence. I can understand, you're on, this is a property that, even though you're on Willow, you're on a corner lot with Beakman Road, so I clearly can understand. My concern is, I can understand why you would want your backyard, okay, again, this is a corner lot, so you really have two front yards. I can understand why you'd want more protection and privacy for your rear yard.
Sure.
I don't necessarily don't need, understand why you need to extend it as far forward as you have, unless you're trying to minimize the impact of the visual, you know, from what you're seeing from your house. So, you can explain it, that's...
Well, first of all, before we even begin, I just want to clarify the variance. From my understanding, I only need a one-foot variance, because I have a six-foot fence in the variance.
You're allowed a four-foot fence.
Okay, so I need a two-foot variance. Thanks for clarifying.
In the front of your home, in the front of the rear line of your home?
Fine.
The maximum is four feet.
Okay, fine. Well, let me begin, first of all. In the house for the last ten years, at the time when we did build this, I did reach out. I did call the dig, I did get approval for it, and all the siding and all the measurements. I did reach out to the building department. A fence permit was not required, okay? I was directed towards the website to go look into, you know, the zoning law and do the searches and try to find all this stuff out. So, it wasn't ignorance, it wasn't in a vacuum. I did reach out and proper authorities. Okay, well, and first of all, why would it be higher in the front of the fence is for privacy? Okay, a couple of reasons. I do have young kids, in terms of children, and predators can be actually over four-foot tall and being such a mean thoroughfare.
Right.
Second thing is, is privacy, obviously, which is, as well as pollution, in terms of noise pollution, air pollution, as well as the physical trash. And I also want to point out, too, though, that my neighbor adjacent to me, he has any foot fence on the road, on Augusta. If you go down toward Beakman Road, towards eighty-two, Augusta Court, no?
Augusta Drive.
Augusta Drive, they have eight-foot fences in the front of the house.
Again, they may have gotten permission for it, I don't, I don't know.
Oh, absolutely, and I'm sure they have, and if so...
Yours, I just happened to see it go up.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I just want to point that out, that I'm not the only person in the community requesting that.
We understand, and there are, and very frequently, we see requests, there are times when it's very appropriate.
Absolutely.
Okay, we had dogs that would jump fences, and we've had other issues where it really was appropriate. Again, given your location, I don't, I don't doubt that you, why you're asking for the, for the six-foot fence.
Yep, and also, too, to add to that fact is, just keep in mind, and I have a picture here. My location of my property is a little bit lower, and when you're coming down Beakman Road from the iconic into town, you do have that gradient, and so that extra height in the front does afford a little more property, okay? I did mention safety. I do have two young kids, they're ten years old. I encourage them to be outside. They have a quad, they have a dirt bike. We have a little track, and it's right behind the fence, and I'll show you a picture where that is as well. And the fence does afford that safety in terms of not distracting drivers coming down the road, not, the kids just having a mishap going into the road. Safety, as well as deer, quite honest with you. We love our deer, they're our neighbors as well. But, you know, with Lyme disease, we don't want to encourage them in my backyard or coming through. But, yeah, we want to leave enough room so they can stay as well. In safety of the traveling, of traffic patterns, I have a picture here as well, where I can show you, if you stand on the stop, if you're actually on Willow Drive, making a left-hand turn to go into town, there's ninety feet there from the corner to where the fence starts. There's an uninterrupted line of sight. I think it gives everyone plenty of room. You can actually see down to the corner, past that little pin there. So, I don't believe it presents a safety hazard to the public as well.
Okay, how far is the fence from the rear line of your house to where it ends now? Going forward, heading toward yours, the street?
From Willow to the, it's ninety feet, as indicated in the map.
I thought ninety feet, you said, was unobstructed.
Oh, correct, I'm, excuse me.
So, from where the fence starts to the rear line of your house?
Yep.
What's that stretch?
It is two-hundred-and-eighty-five feet, I believe it is.
Two-hundred, that's, that's in all, maybe?
Yes, the entire...
So, what's the stretch?
Now, keep in mind, now, my property line is on, it's not a straight adjacent corner.
And we have your lot.
Yeah, and so I do have a cushion of, I believe it's two feet from my, the prop, from the neighbor's property line to the fence.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is, from the rear line of your home back, you're allowed the six-foot fence?
Oh.
What I'm...
Oh, geez, okay.
Except that this is a corner lot again.
It is a corner lot.
So, it is the entire fence, right, Mary?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to see, I think he has two issues going on here.
I do, I do. There's one fence on Beakman Road, and then there's, there's one inside the front.
Right in the front of your house. I'm trying to, the one along Beakman Road, it's a front yard again. So, it's not actually just to the rear line of the house, it is the entire stretch.
Yeah, unfortunately.
All right, so, yeah, so...
Yeah.
Could, couples of those sections that are in the front, I'm trying to understand, you have it at two-hundred-and-eighty-five feet, I know it's, again, it's a long area, but are all of those sections in the front really needed?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes?
Absolutely, yeah, in terms of safety for the children, absolutely, because that, keep in mind, that's where they play. There's actually a little tree fort there as well.
In the front of your house?
What you're considering the front of the house, certainly, with the corner lot, and it goes to the corner, absolutely.
Okay, so then the other issue is that, in the front of your house, again, the six-foot fence can start with the rear line of your house. I believe yours starts, I'm not sure that the panel on the left, last I saw, now that it's dark at night, I don't see it as much. I don't think that the panel on the left was actually attached. I think it was just leaning there or something.
It's a self-standing, yeah.
Oh, well, that would explain it, okay.
Yeah, I believe it's number two reference on the map. Yeah, no, absolutely. At one point in time, I believe it was, it was leaning.
Yeah.
But, yeah, just propped it up. It is self-standing, and we can talk about that one. I think the main concern here is the, is the fence along the road. If the interior fence needs to be shortened, it's not a...
Okay, because either that would be four feet, or you'd have to push to have it start at the rear line of the house.
Fine, we can take that down to four.
You'll take it down to four?
Well, actually, well, can we talk about that, because the only reason, only reason I want that there is, so when people come down the road, they don't see my trash cans. Those green royal carding things, and four feet's not gonna do it.
Yeah, well, those trash cans are not...
All right.
They're not, they're not even five feet. I mean, I'm over five feet tall in there. I tell, you know, I'm well above those, so. Four feet should do that fine. Really?
Okay.
Safety, something like that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you as much of a hard time about it.
That's fine.
But if that's what you're trying to hide, then...
Oh, yeah, that's...
I appreciate the aesthetic value of having it there, but...
And that's fine, quite honest with you. I think the main concern here tonight is the fence along Beakman Road, right?
So, that would be the left side. Now, how about the right side of your home? I don't even know if there's a front fence in the front.
Yeah, there's a little prop fence there. Yeah, I can show you a little pitch of it. It's basically just a privacy fence. And it is, it is six-foot tall.
Again, in that case, that's the side that the playhouse is there and the kids are...
No, it's on the other side.
That's on the other side?
Well, let me show you.
No, because I think it's right here. What I'm, what I would see is the playhouse is right here, right?
Correct, so here's the play, the tree fort right here, right? So, now, we're talking about the fence.
That's why you want the fence along there, okay.
And then there's that, this little one right here for the garbage cans, which will cut down to four feet tall. And that's this one right here. And then we just have a little short one right here, but it's kind of attached, it's not attached to the house, it's like a couple inches away, and that one's six-foot tall, so my question to the board would be...
What's behind that? What is it hiding, or why? Does it need to be six?
No, it's just a patio. That's all.
All right, patio, I can...
It's just a privacy screen, that's all, so when the neighbors come down Beakman Road, I...
Can I have a look?
Yeah, you can.
Is part of this eight feet tall? He was saying it was about eight foot tall.
Is this eight feet tall or six feet?
No, they're eight foot.
Long sections, nothing's eight-foot tall. Yeah, sorry, yeah, did I say eight foot? Yeah, it's only four-foot, six-foot tall, excuse me.
It's all the same fence, so it's...
Yeah.
Yes, but if it's eight feet tall...
Yeah, I think earlier he said eight-foot sections.
Yeah, eight-foot sections, we need to add a length of it, and it hurts.
That's, that's great, thank you. It's a nice fence.
Yeah, well, that was the thing. I wanted it to be, I didn't want it to be an ordinary, you know, I wanted it to be appealing to the eyes, quite honest with you. As soon as it, you know, allowing that the fence still stands, I want it painted green so it matches the environment. It's very important to use natural materials. They don't want to put a vinyl fence up, when all my neighbors have wood siding houses.
Did I hear you say you're gonna paint it green?
Yes.
You are, really?
Or stain, with your permission, yeah, unless I can't, which will save me some money. But if I were to stain it, it would prolong the life of it.
Oh, staining it is fine. I'm not sure we want it stained green, do we? I wouldn't.
You wouldn't?
No.
Some brown, some ones in the woods.
No, keep it natural.
Yeah, all right, because when you, when you drive to work every day down Bedford and all of those, no, when I drive to work, all those fences are green.
I don't think we'd want to see green.
Yeah, naturally.
It just wouldn't look, you know what I mean? It looks nice and classy and...
Do I have a decision, or not, or, just, no, with all due respect, I mean, is there a code?
With all due respect, you know, that your neighbors will want to know, what color are you gonna keep it? That's why we have to ask the question.
Oh, no, and, and that's fair.
They may have some say on, you know, whether...
That's fair enough.
What color they'd like to see, but...
I absolutely agree with you. As the topic comes up, I just want to press the answer.
Green might just...
Actually, make it stick out more.
Yeah, that's...
That's...
Fair enough.
Natural, I mean, staining is fine, I mean, but...
Yeah, staining is, that's fine.
Waterproofing it or something, extending the life, I think that's fine, but again, a natural...
It's green with white.
Yeah, it looks like it's, that's gray, I think.
Well, that is the neighbor's fence. If you look in on...
But it breaks up the green.
And that's what I want to explain to you. The neighbor does, adjacent on Augusta, that's his fence right there. He does have a six-foot tall fence, and he's really close to it.
And I guess there are, you will see that there are some six-foot fences that are approved, okay? I don't know anything about that one, so I'm...
I'm with you. I just want to point it out there, just so we're on record.
You're not the only one.
Yep, so let's see here, what didn't we talk about here?
What's the, any comments or questions for board members?
I think I might have gave someone an extra piece of paper.
Pardon? No, we just, we just got the three pictures.
No.
No, there's not.
Nothing attached.
In your situation, you have two front yards, and maybe, you know, your neighbor, I don't know how the lot is positioned, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, in terms of, like, undesirable impact, it is a thoroughfare, and granted...
Again, you're on Beakman Road and, I mean, it's a busy road, so we can understand it, so. Motion to advertise?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Pam will give you, at the end here, she'll give you your instructions for your advertising, and then we'll see you next month.
Fantastic. One last question for the board. Now, given that it's a two-foot variance, would that be considered a substantial change?
Do you get it? No?
Excuse me?
If you get it, no. If you are awarded the variance, no.
We can't tell you that now. We have to hear what your neighbors have to say, seriously. All right, Pam will give you your instructions.
Public hearing, January thirteenth.
And then there were two. Item number eight, Appeal 3712, Schuer?
Schoyer.
Schoyer?
The owner is Elizabeth Schuer. My name is Wade Silkworth, I'm her engineer.
Okay, Elizabeth Schuer, forty-seven thirty Fieldstone Road Bronx, is requesting a thirty-eight-foot rear line variance for a proposed barn addition to her property located at thirty-two Phillips Road, Hopple Junction, pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Now, please introduce yourself.
Ah, yes, okay, my name's Wade Silkworth, I'm the engineer for the applicant.
Wade, would you say your last name?
First name is Wade, W-A-D-E.
Right.
Last name Silkworth, S-I-L-K-W-O-R-T-H.
Thank you. And we have something on file? Yes, okay, all right, go ahead. So, she's, she does, does she live, she does not live here?
Not full-time, no.
Oh, okay, so this is a, like, a second residence?
It's a second residence, absolutely.
And so, there's already a barn on the property?
Yes, there's currently a farmhouse and two barns on the two-point-eight-nine-acre parcel.
And she's looking to do in addition to one of those barns?
Right, right.
Why?
She's, she needs more storage space. She has a whole bunch of farm equipment, tools, everything else. The barn is currently full, and she just wants to basically double the size of the barn, extend it thirty-six feet, straight to the rear, keeping the exact same front shape gable that it is, and just extend it straight back to the rear. The required setback here is fifty feet in the rear. We're actually proposing to come within thirty-eight feet of the rear line, so it's actually a twelve-foot variance that was typed a little bit differently. I think it said thirty-eight-foot variance on the agenda, so I just wanted to make that clear.
So, why that barn, not the other barn?
Pam, you understand?
What? No.
He said he's thirty-eight feet from the rear line. So, he only needs the twelve-foot variance. So, I'm sorry, what did you ask?
I asked why that barn, not the other barn, which is for...
No, I, thank you, I was gonna answer the same question.
Sure, that's a good question. I wish I would have addressed that with Elizabeth. She actually wanted to be here, but she didn't want to drive up in the weather tonight. But I believe, you know, just by looking at the site and being there a few times, the barn where it currently sits, the barn that she wants to extend is on a much more level surface, and if you notice the topography on the other barn, to extend it, you know, to the side yard, it kind of drops down the hill toward the stream.
Yeah, but it's a two-foot contour, contour is spread over...
Yeah, you're right.
This isn't a scale, so I can't comment on it.
And I haven't been in the other barn either. Both barns were constructed circa nineteen-hundred, so I'm actually not sure of the condition of the second barn. Maybe it's not worth adding on to. I'm just kind of brainstorming myself here.
All right, but understand, we have to understand, right.
And at the next meeting, or before then, I can get an answer from the owner on why this specific barn in, and not the other one.
Or, the other question would be, why does it have to be, what's the size of the barn?
The current barn itself is thirty-six feet deep. We're basically doubling the size of it to the rear.
So, why does it have to be thirty-six feet? Why can't it be a twenty-four-foot addition deep? And take it right to the setback line?
Yeah, you know, that's the, the size barn that she says she needs, she needs for her storage.
Then the question would be, can she do twenty-four feet in the back, and then perhaps wrap it around a little bit?
Yeah, and you know, that's why I answered the question, yes, on the form, that obviously there are other ways. There could be in addition to the side, there could be addition, I suppose, to the front. You know, the idea with this barn was to keep the historical nature of it and keep the front facade, so it looks exactly the same from the road that it does today, and just keep that uniform straight back.
Understood, which raises the question, is this national registry?
It's not on the national registry, no.
Is it locally significant, or?
Not, from my opinion, I haven't been able to find it on, on any list, so...
Pam, can somebody check, between now and next month, can somebody check if it's locally significant? Okay. I appreciate wanting to make it less visible and not disturbing the visual impact of the original barn, which really begs the question, why, why can't it go behind the other barn?
I think, you look at the thing, there are two barns up there, or at least a barn is a different shape. Here, it is just a flat, so they're just extending it further.
So, put it back here, and he doesn't need a variance, she doesn't need a variance?
So, I think you should, have you...
Well, here's the other situation with this application, and I'm not sure if you kind of sifted through the paperwork, but this is a two-point-eight-ninth-acre parcel, but she owns several other parcels surrounding it, total one-hundred-and-thirty acres. So, we understand that, you know, she's pretty much set that this is, this is what she wants to do. I think she's...
Is she her only neighbor?
She is her only neighbor, absolutely, with this parcel of land. So, you know, it really doesn't impact any other neighbor. The closest house that...
Good question.
The closest house that she doesn't own is eight-hundred feet away.
See, the farmer's great tonight.
What's she say?
She asked if you could, if she can do lot line realignment with herself, and give herself her own twelve feet that she needs back there.
That is an option, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That would be a much...
We eliminate the variance.
Right, she...
It's just a planning board. You gotta go to the planning board instead of this open door.
It's a survey, it's a longer process, it's, it's time and money at that point. We understand that there's two options there.
I mean, we don't want to be difficult, but anything we do for, you know, you, we'd have to consider for anybody else, and we would ask these questions.
Sure.
And I said, we make the public hearings look relatively easy. It's because we do this.
I know, and I'm glad we're hashing it all out now, that's fine. And understanding that we know that that is an option, I'd like to ask the board if it's an option for you to possibly grant a variance so that we can move forward with some kind of condition or covenant placed in the deed that if she were to ever sell this property or anything else, that she would undertake a lot line realignment at that time and rectify the situation?
That would be tough to do.
Yeah, that's...
To be judging, you know, from a document fifty years later.
Yeah, how do we enforce that?
I'm just asking if it's an option.
It would be easier if she appears before us next month to answer some of these questions, and it sounds like she has more knowledge.
She's not gonna build it in January or February anyway, so...
Oh, no, it's, you know, she wants to build it next year.
So, we have a month to really get, do another review and ask the question, why not behind the other barn or barns?
Right. The other barn, if you notice, is situated the other way, and the, and the, the gable of the roof runs the other way.
Well... Well, one of those, there, it looks like there's two attached barns there.
Yeah, there's two.
One looks like it's facing front.
Right. I, I'll have to ask her what, what her thought was on, on why this barn, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would help.
And not the other, sure. But I, you know, I, I just wanted to relay to the board that, um, she seems pretty set, and this is what she wants to do, so... I mean, ultimately, I guess if it takes a lot line realignment, that's the route we'll probably have to go.
Well, or, or, like I said, she can make it twelve, twenty-four feet instead of thirty-six.
Sure. I've actually already suggested that to her.
Okay.
Um, she wants it thirty-six, and that's why we're here.
Okay.
Uh, we understand that if, we could have just pulled the building from it and built it already, if, if she wanted it twenty-four, she says she needs thirty-six, and that's why we're, we're going this route. Um, yeah.
Now, you've mentioned, earlier you had mentioned that all these two barns are, like, over a hundred years old.
That's what the tax record says, it's probably approximate, that, you know, it says constructed in nineteen hundred, I don't know how exactly accurate that is, but by looking at them, yeah, you know, I'd say they're about a hundred years old.
My question was gonna be, are they falling apart, that you're trying to replace it, so, so that you need to sort of move this content from one to the other, and are there any factors that are, that you're considering, or are being considered? If one of them is falling apart, then you build a new barn, and then you move the content? I mean, I don't know.
Right. Um, I, I can't speak to the barn that we're not proposing to add on to, that one may not be as in, in great shape. The barn that we are proposing to add on to, uh, does have some structural deficiencies, and as part of the addition, we will be reinforcing some of the post and beam structure that's there, um, but overall, it's in pretty good shape.
Are you actually gonna have a connection inside, or are you just adding a whole separate barn on?
The rear wall of the barn will be taken off, and it will be continuous through, to the second barn.
Is this a story, or, sorry, is there a loft?
It's just an open loft. Um, there are storage loft areas about six feet high on each side, um, that are old.
But are we no greater in height than what's there now?
No, no, it'll actually exactly match, the new additional will match what's there, and as far as the interior building design, uh, we're working on that right now, on whether she wants to keep those lofts and, and how to configure them for storage space.
Do you know how big the lot is that's behind this?
Uh, I don't believe I have that tax parcel with me, but that is, um, it's, it's a larger parcel that is actually farmed, I believe. I think that's a forty or fifty acre piece.
Okay, so there's no residential homes back there?
No, no. Yeah, as I said, the, the closest, uh, home that she doesn't own is eight hundred feet away, to the left.
And, and to the, I, where's north? North is that way. So to the, toward the property to her right, which is now or formerly Phillips, is that, is there a wetland there, and is that the, where I see the word area, is that like a buffer or something, buffer area? I mean, there's a stream there?
It says SDS area.
What?
It says SDS.
SDS area, that's the septic system.
Oh, okay.
There's a stream over.
Because I do see a stream there, that's what's making me wonder if that's kind of like a buffer area or something for it.
There is a stream going, going through that portion, and there's a pond in the lower left-hand corner, which, um...
Looks like it's on the lot next door.
It is classified, I believe, as an Army Corps wetland, that pond itself.
Because again, that, part of that could impact as to why not the other...
Yeah.
Why, why the right side portion of her property might not be a good alternate location for it, okay? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yep.
So the existing barn that she has now is thirty-six by...
Thirty-six by forty-five, forty-five and a half.
And you, so you're, she's adding another thirty-six by forty-five?
Right, correct.
Wow. That's huge, exactly.
But you should see the existing barn, it's, it's packed full of, uh, tractors and tools and supplies and all kinds of stuff, so...
So is this, is, this is what she uses to farm the adjoining property?
Yeah, she doesn't actually farm it herself, I believe portions or, or different parcels are leased to different people to farm, and I'm not sure how, what kind of agreement she might have for use of equipment or, or anything else, but...
Like community farming, like community farming?
I'm not quite sure, I know there's some, there's some kind of lease involved.
But so the size of this structure is now gonna be seventy-two feet back, and forty-five feet over, you know, forty-five feet wide?
Correct, correct, yes.
Big barn.
That's a big barn, that's a...
Is that a separate, is there a restriction in size?
Well, it's a barn, not a garage.
It's a pretty big barn.
No, in the new code, isn't there something about the other structure?
I just designed one in Lagrange, it was fifty by a hundred.
Have to be certain, you know how they rewrote that part of the code?
I wouldn't want to have to clean it out.
No, me neither, me neither.
Detached accessory structures. There might be something about the square footage allowed in the new code, because it says detached garages can only be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Right.
Right.
And then it said any other detached structure is limited to like three hundred and fifty square feet. Remember, the town board just adopted that new code this year.
Last year.
Last year?
Does that apply to a, a working farm that maybe have agricultural exemptions? We already approached the building department, and he said this rear line would be our only issue with, with pulling the building permit.
Is the farming done on this lot?
On this lot, that's a good question, that will have to be, be determined, I suppose. If we're, if we're going that way, if, if we need the exemption on...
Is this, is any part of the property over there in the, in the ag district, agricultural district of the county?
I think the one, you get behind this, the culture of it.
The one, the one to the rear.
Well, that doesn't mean it's in the ag district.
Right, it doesn't mean it's in the district, yeah, right.
It just means it's a farm, you know? I'd be curious whether she's, any of this property is in the agricultural district, because I would think that would give certain exemptions then.
Right.
Because if it's a working farm, it's...
If it's a working farm, I don't, I don't think you even need to build it.
Right, but I don't know that this lot is a working farm.
Well, they would, when they designated it, they would, if they...
That, that's why I'm saying, if this lot is not, as far as the town's code is concerned, the agriculture, if it's in the agricultural district, because it's supporting the, it, that may help its cause, all right, to help us get around the issue. That's what I'm trying to get at. I think you got a little bit more work to do, if you don't mind, okay?
Um, are the outstanding questions going to prevent us from having the public hearing?
Well, yeah, because we don't know that, if she puts, if she doubles the size of the other barn, she doesn't need the, the variance again. We really need to understand why is it not the other barn?
Okay.
And what about if it's on historic registry, is there something about adding to it, I don't know?
No, there's nothing.
Only, I mean, if, even if there, if, and if there, the issue, the only issue would be that you have to make it so, you have to follow the Secretary of Interior standards, so that, in essence, this, the, anything that gets added doesn't detract from the distinguishing features of the original structure. So, you used, it usually means any addition is not like materials, it's actually very, very different kinds of materials, so, um, but that's usually only if you take federal funding, so...
Oh.
Right.
She doesn't have to worry about that.
It's privately owned and privately funded, so I don't think there's any restriction.
Right, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but...
But I would suggest that...
I would just like to come away from this meeting, I guess, with a, with a better idea. I mean, like I said, part of the, the reason, I suppose, for, for coming here was to try and save time and money, uh, by, by going for the variance, and, you know, even with the possibility of doing it with the condition of a later realignment, um, you know, but if I'm gonna leave here today with these open-ended questions, uh, because this is what she wants to do, she wants to add to this barn, I understand you would like to know why not the other barn, and I wish I had an answer for you, but she's gonna pursue this project either way with this barn, from, from what I gather.
Is she gonna show at the next meeting, do you think?
Absolutely, yeah, like I said, she wanted to be here tonight, and she called me an hour before the meeting and said, oh, the weather's bad, I'm, you know...
Um, I would rather see another review next month, because I think there's so many issues, and again, uh, we need to have a better feel for this parcel. Again, you have to do your historic research, ag district, some of the other issues that were raised, for example, wetland is a pond, there's a stream, um, you know, that basically is, again, is affecting...
Bottom line is, we could still go through the public hearing, but we just might be wasting...
Better to fill in the holes of the review.
Time, right, yeah. I, I, I mean, again, because who's she gonna be noticing, herself?
You can repeat, yeah.
Right, I mean, it's a formality that still needs to be done, the public hearing, that's why, I mean...
I, I guess that my bigger issue is whether there's a restriction on the size of a structure.
Even with a variance, you're not allowed to be bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet? For the second accessory structure?
This is the third accessory structure.
Yeah, this is a...
Well, it's, it's actually attached.
Well, it's in addition to the second accessory structure. Can it, can I just ask what portion of the code that's in?
It's a local law that was adopted in January, I believe?
February fourteen.
So it's not actually in the zoning code?
Local law number two.
Local law number two.
Had it been codified yet, I don't know? It should have been, that was back in February.
And that reads, any accessory structure?
At least to get updates, only once a year, so... So again, but if the ag district may help you, whether it's part of the farm may help you, I, that's why we're suggesting you really need to do a little bit more.
Under no condition shall the structure exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet, or sixty percent of the footprint of the principal structure, whichever is greater in size, and one point five stories or twenty-five feet in height.
So they're allowed to be three hundred and fifty square feet, but if they want to go above that, they have to get a variance, but it still cannot exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet.
But if it's a farm, all bets are off. We just don't know that this is a farm, lot.
Or a historical structure.
Or, right.
Lovely, so you can...
Well, are, but you said in historical structures, there's no exemption for that, aside, I mean, there, the existing part of it would have been historical with the addition.
Wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be, so how, I don't know if that exemption...
That's why the only exemption I can come, think of would be farming, agricultural.
Right.
If, because if this is for, to store farm equipment for the working farm, then...
Right.
But my only concern is it's not part of that lot, unless there's some portion of farming also done on this lot.
Right.
Which, according to the aerial, is...
There's a lot of questions.
Does not look like it. Well, except, oh...
The back corners possibly.
Yeah, maybe over here, I don't know.
I think a few, maybe.
Maybe they could combine them.
Oh, yeah, maybe there.
Just vacant land, the property behind it.
Sure.
Wade, you gotta get us more answers.
Okay.
All right.
Fair enough. The, um, just to be clear, the, even if we, even if we're a working farm, uh, and we, and we get certain exemptions that way, that's still not gonna exempt us from the rear lot line, though, that's, uh, and that's why we're here, okay?
But at least it gives us something to work with, okay? I, I'm just trying to come up with something that makes this unique enough to be able to say...
Sure.
Why, why your, why this one and not any other one.
So we'll keep, so we'll, uh, be on the agenda in January, but just for review, I guess.
January. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Is it thirty-six by forty-five, you said, or?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And item number nine, appeal three seven one three, Ven, Venatosi, okay? Anthony Venatosi, seven Burbank Road, Hopple Junction, requesting a three foot sideline and a four foot rear line variance for an existing house, a one foot sideline and ten foot front line variance for a proposed twenty-seven by sixteen foot addition, a sixteen foot rear line variance for a proposed twenty by twelve foot deck, and a six foot rear line variance for a proposed six foot by ten foot shed at eleven Fox Road, Hopple Junction, pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash one oh seven and one ninety-four dash one twenty-three A of the zoning ordinance. You have a lot going on there.
It's a little lot.
I'm recusing myself from this.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
And then there were three here. All right, so Mr. Venatosi, if you don't mind, take us through.
Well, this is a, it's a, only an eight hundred square foot house.
Oh, okay, well, that starts, that, that sets the stage.
Yeah, so... Yeah, the original house had three bedrooms, but each bedroom was about the size of a closet.
Okay.
So we're looking to add the addition on to add, make one nice master bedroom, and two additional bedrooms, and then a deck in the back.
So what would the total size of the house be?
It would be twelve hundred and fifty square, twelve hundred and forty-eight square feet when it's done.
Is there a second story, or there's not?
No, no.
Okay, why not go up?
Um, just, just the, the, the house is only twenty foot wide, you'd have to put a massive set of stairs, and it would take up, like, a third of the footprint of the house, to go up.
But come on, come over here for a second, what is, what is this little area here? Is this just, I thought this might be a set of stairs, or...
Stairs that go to the basement.
So you can't go over those, to go up?
Well...
Because, you know, what's really weird is you've got two bedrooms here, and they've got to go use a bathroom all the way over here.
Yeah, but from here to here, it's only seventeen feet.
Oh, all right, okay, okay. I, I, you don't get that impression from, from this?
No, you don't.
You know, i- if you compare it to the, to the two point something acres of the last application...
Yeah.
That's like squeezed in here on the, on the same sized piece of paper, it's apples and oranges.
It's very small.
Understood.
So the shed is going to be built into that house?
The shed, the shed's gonna be attached to the back of the house, just a place to park the kids' bicycles and lawnmower. Because I don't really don't want, there's not enough backyard to put up an auxiliary structure, so we just want to attach it to the house.
Where's your septic?
In the front yard.
Oh, okay.
And we have city water.
What city?
Hopebough.
And there's a future deck that you plan to have, I mean?
Just, just a simple wood deck.
So, but, but the reason I was asking is I wanted to be sure your deck wasn't going over your septic.
No, 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 no.
Because you probably have a postage-sized damn backyard?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, we know these lots well.
Yeah, forty, I think forty-eight and a half feet to the, to the back property line.
Would you need a variance for that, for the deck, Mary?
He's requesting a variance here.
I was told it would need one.
He needs a s...
Proposed.
Sixteen foot rear line variance.
Okay, perfect, that's good.
What size is the deck gonna be? Sorry, twelve by twenty?
Twelve, twelve by twenty.
If you reduced it, well, it's the twelve foot side that reduces the, the variance, so...